We have some minutes left for the executive session?
No, it's crossed out.
Yeah, we just struck those for right now because we weren't 100% ready on those, so we're just gonna strike over it.
Okay. Okay, with no... We have a section for public comments. Does anybody wish to speak for the board at this time?
Well, I do like to mention something that someone mentioned to me, which I consider important, is that they were at home and they were listening to the meeting. And they said that fidelity was not clear, and you couldn't hear you guys. So, I don't know if there's any way to make sure that someone monitors these things so that the folks in television land, who can't come out to see us for whatever reason, they can get a real representation, rather than saying that they can't hear it and they lose interest. So, that's one point.
Yeah, we've had that comment before. We've fiddled around with some of these stuff, but...
The last...
It's only when it's live.
You go on YouTube, it's then you can hear it.
I can check right now.
What?
It should be live, let me check.
The last meeting, I couldn't come up, and I don't usually watch them live, and you couldn't understand a word you were saying.
Okay.
I thought that's useless.
Yeah, part of, at the special town meeting, some of the PEG access fund we released was to look into that specifically and getting some of the games on from the school.
Okay.
So, that's what the access funds we released for, to try to get this cleaned up and to try to... I think there was something with the sources of media, the type of media. I'm not gonna claim to know, but...
Yeah, it was terrible.
Audio, video versus digital versus however it goes out and...
I thought maybe they'd clear it up the next day, but it wasn't.
Oh, it's not gonna be an overnight issue. It's gotta be a hardware, a change, device change.
It was the way it was recorded.
It will get there, but it's not gonna...
But I would think they could check it when it first starts, the meeting, to see if the sound is clear.
Typically, they do. But if there's any sort of issue between the live feed and how they're hearing it and the way it's being broadcast through cable, then that's not gonna be picked up unless somebody, unless a resident says that they can't hear. And then, after, once we get back, the complaint will follow to our cable access to have them get to it.
Could you put, maybe put on the screen a phone number to call if the sound isn't right, so people could call right away?
Let me talk to the cable access guy to see if he's willing to fill those calls.
Because you know, otherwise...
It should be easy enough for them to do, yes.
Yeah, they can't hear it.
But we do know it's an issue, and that's what's been brought up before. And that's why part of the access funds we authorized to go towards that. That's exactly why, because that complaint, we're trying to get it fixed. Hopefully, it does. And I've watched some meetings in the past afterwards, and they're clear.
Yeah.
But it sounds like it's more of a random that you don't hear it than... I don't think it's an ongoing issue as far as all the meetings, you don't get good audio. I just think it's happened randomly, and I don't know why.
It's working fine right now.
Yep. Dennis?
It's working fine right now.
Okay.
Well, the last meeting, you could...
No, I understand that. I'm just saying it's working fine right now.
Okay. And it comes in okay on YouTube?
It's fine on YouTube, yeah.
Okay. All righty.
I have something else.
Okay.
Is that I noticed they were pulling, some company came and was pulling out telephone poles, and I'm speaking specifically at hole number 16, which is on West Street. And they took out one short pole, and they didn't fill the hole. So, I called Mass Electric on two occasions, and of course, it was snowing, and I don't know, of course, I don't know what happened today, but did someone, did someone from the town direct a group to come around and take the poles out? Or is that something they're just doing for their own maintenance? I was just concerned that one of my tenants or maybe somebody walking by, walked into that hole and hurt themselves, and then we have a problem. So, I just wanted to bring it to someone's attention.
See, any of the utility work usually falls directly on the utilities. We don't schedule any of that work for them unless we get a specific complaint to ask for them to look into. Typically, National Grids in charge of setting poles, and Verizon is in charge of removing them because they're the lowest on the pole. So, I'd have to, I just have to contact Verizon.
All I've done is, I've called National Grid on two occasions and filed some sort of a notice that there's a big hole there, that's all. And I don't know if it's that way all over town, but it clearly is at hole number 16.
Okay. Did anybody else have anything they wish to bring up with the board at this time? Okay. Okay. I see we have our Council on Aging Director here. I assume it's the discussion with Hardwick? Okay. And they'll be showing up? Okay. Okay. Solar development issues. Andrew, did you have anything you wished to...
Something that Matt and I were discussing about putting on the agenda. We don't have a full presentation related to put together on it yet, but what we were looking at doing was basically, you know, if we do decide that this is something that we want to go forward with on West Street, I'm still pulling a little bit of information about the actual site, that we would do it under Chapter 30B and basically, but look to do a design, do a solicitation for engineers specific to this type of development and have some sort of screening committee to actually go through the engineer, the engineer RFP proposals to select the correct, the correct person for us. So, I just wanted to give you that update as far as where we were. And I know that Matt wants to discuss it a little bit more, so I guess the next meeting we can dive into that a little bit. But that's kind of where we're at, as far as that goes.
Okay. Why don't you explain a little bit for everybody what the 30B refers to?
Yes. So, 30B refers to disposition, or refers to the disposition of real property. So, we'd be looking at entering into a lease agreement on town-owned property for a site that we specify. And basically, we'd be relying on an engineer to kind of provide a outline of what could go there, and then represent the, and then once the town selects a developer and enters into a lease purchase, or a lease program with them, that engineer would basically represent the town to make sure that it's installed them in a way that is beneficial to the town and not, you know, just by any means necessary.
Okay. Okay, so what would you like from us?
Nothing for right now.
Okay.
It's just an update as far as where we're at, what we're looking into, and say, ongoing process.
Yep. We talked about a couple of sites, one down by the town bar and one, obviously, up on Town Farm Road, and get possible locations.
Yeah, we just gotta solicit as much information as we can about those sites before going out, so that way any potential bidder would have as much information on that as possible.
Are these sites compliant with the zoning board's proposed bylaws?
That is, would still be part of the package that we have to put together, I believe, but I couldn't guarantee without any sort of certainty at this point.
Well, if they knew that, I wouldn't go too far with it.
Exactly.
You have some questions, Charlie, out there? There's questions out on the floor.
Hmm?
There's questions on the floor, if you want to address them.
Okay. Cam?
Well, I, I thought, I don't wanna tell you guys what to do, but I thought that once the solar bylaw was established, which it is, that we would just open up all the town-owned land that we might consider utilizing for solar, and bring this information to the attention of companies out there who are looking to do business on a large scale. Now, most recently, I didn't realize it, but I was involved from the outside when the Public Safety Building was being thought of and designed and planned. I was at quite a few meetings, but not as a committee member, just as an observer. And I brought to their attention the fact, before they even built it, before they even designed it, that the state of Massachusetts had just completed or was completing a building net zero. You are, everybody understands what net zero is. So, I pleaded and fought and discussed and passed out paperflits and did all sorts of stuff to try to get that building to be net zero, because that's only sensible. I recently found out that the electric bill on that building for a whole year is $30,000. So, I can't imagine building a building now for a town and not have some sort of solar connection. So, when we use this opportunity, now that we have a solar bylaw, to open up this town for solar, I think that some connection should be made for the Public Safety Building, so that becomes, so that doesn't become a liability, which it is now. And with solar, it can be not a liability.
When you're negotiating a solar agreement, you're negotiating a price per megawatt. Same way that you are when you're, when you're going to a Constellation Energy or buying it directly through National Grids. So, you're still, typically, it's a shorter, it's a lower amount than what the current rate is. I mean, typically, eight cents a kilowatt versus 10 cents. So, it would be, it would be savings, but, you know, we currently kind of have that agreement with, I think, about 70% of what our usage is right now with a site that isn't even in Berry. So, we don't, not utilize solar, but we, you know, that's really what the benefit to that building would be. It wouldn't be a net, a net zero cost. It would be a reduced cost using solar-generated S-Rigs.
Yeah.
The only way to significantly reduce it is to own the solar. We're not gonna own the solar at this point.
But it's too late, but I'm saying it's too late on that building, but it could have been designed. I didn't realize it was costing us $30,000, and that's a lot of money for electricity. So, now we have to think about how we're gonna do it. We have D-9 and Dolly put up a system, whatever they're making, it's profitable. There's a system on West Street. Whatever the company is making is profitable. There's a system on South Street, the same thing, the system by the, by the Sportsman's Club. Whatever they're doing there, there's a profit there. Why can't the town participate in profits like that, but as a town?
Well, the profit's in the lease. That's what we're talking about, is leasing the property.
So, my question to you is, why can you not go to Concerns, who do business in Massachusetts, and offer to lease them our land and do business?
Because we're talking about having an engineer represent our interests, so that way, somebody doesn't just come in here and do whatever they want to do.
But it takes a long time to find their, it takes time to hire an engineer. Right now, at least, we can, we can show the public that we're interested in doing business, because the only one who are doing business are the private people.
Private doesn't have as much regulatory governance than the public sector.
Right. And if the town does have regulatory governance, that's understandable. But can't we bring in somebody in the next meeting to discuss this? Have an open meeting with an engineer or with a person who...
I've already outlined what my plan is, so that's the way we're gonna proceed.
But it's gonna take a long time.
It is.
Thank you for the input, Sam.
Thank you.
You're, we're looking into that, actually. You have one more back there, Charlie. Dennis wants to have some say. Charlie? Dennis wants to ask questions, well?
Got Dennis?
Andrew, did I hear you correctly that you mentioned West Street for a possible...
No, I mentioned Town Farm Road.
I thought I heard you say West Street.
You said something about West Street.
I'm sorry if I said West Street, but Town Farm, I think it's, I don't know why, I must have just seen it, just mentioned West Street, and I have it written down in front of me, so that's probably why. But no, Town Farm Road was the site that, near, by the...
The old landfill?
Yeah, the old landfill area.
Okay. Okay, let's, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay. Certifying the useful life on the fire.
Yep, so we just have a piece of paper in here that basically, that you guys are certifying that that apparatus, the minimum lifespan is 30 years, that is sent to the bond company that will allow us to roll that ban for 10, for 10 years rather than five.
That's what this is?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion on that.
Yep.
Okay.
Let me read it.
Right here. There you go.
The purpose of determining the maximum useful life is...
So, that way, we can, so typically, with a bond or a ban, maximum amount of years that you can roll a ban is five, but if you can, if you determine that it, or if you determine that the length, or the useful life of the apparatus is long enough to justify a longer ban, you can take that motion. We're looking to do a 10-year ban rule, so that way, we're effectively paying this off in 10 years rather than five years.
Well, I certainly think we have, most of our fire trucks are more than 30 years old. Do we have anything that tells us the service life of it, that we're...
We're just, this is the best, basically, we're stating that our, our interpretation is that we're going to have this piece of apparatus for 30 years. That is the intent of, of the board in its purchases, by purchasing a piece of apparatus that's gonna last us this long.
Well, that's the idea of going new instead of used, to last longer. I'd hope we, I hope we can sell it to someone else and get a new one before then again, but I would expect the truck will last 30 years. I don't think that's...
Basically, it's that they don't want you to go out and bond a, or ask for a 10-year borrowing on something that's only gonna have a maximum useful life of eight years, so...
My only concern is this statement of 30 years, it seems specific, and it's, well, it says maximum life of 30 years, which means it doesn't, it wouldn't keep beyond 30 years. I'm comfortable with it. I make a motion that we approve and sign this document, that the maximum useful life of the new engine to be purchased would be 30 years.
Okay, and I'll second that. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I guess. Okay, we have... We have for discussion, if need be, a notice here from Tom Donahue, who's on the Cannabis Bylaw Review Committee, that he has a conflict of interest in our, I'll read the political, excuse me, it's a particular matter. And they're up here for review after the meeting, if someone wants to take a look at it. We have another one to read, but this kind of sums it up. "I was a former member, former board member of CPC Barry, a cannabis business that has brought proposals in front of the town of Barry regarding conducting cannabis-related business in the town and have represented their interests in front of authority boards in the recent past. A business that I own conducts business with CPC Barry and other businesses owned by CPC principal partners and board members. My financial interest in this matter is that if particular cannabis bylaws are adopted by the town's people, by the town's people, my business might have the opportunity to do business with these businesses." And that is just a public disclosure. We don't have to take any action on that at this time. Am I correct?
You have to make a determination as the appointing authority.
Okay.
Yeah.
My recommendation, we put Tom on the committee was because he was biased towards the favorable side of this, just as my recommendation for Nekers, she's biased opposed to marijuana. So, it was intentional on my behalf to make sure we had somebody, there's a proponent for marijuana on the committee, and somebody who's opposed to it. So, I understand that and accept his, his conflict. I understand as I before I asked if he's sitting on the committee.
So, under the determination, it'll be determination by appointing authority, that you just have that, you're, you've determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee.
Dennis?
Isn't there a difference between Mrs. Jenkins, I think is her last name?
Can you speak a little louder?
I believe Jan, Mrs. Jenkins, who is Nekar, works for a nonprofit and is not in business to make money with Hugh Drunk.
Correct.
Mr. Donahue is in business to make money.
Correct.
Were these things divulged to your members before you agreed to approve them to be on that committee? Or was this done after the fact?
This form came in after the fact.
Did Mr. Donahue tell you that he worked for that organization before?
Yes.
So, you knew that before him?
We knew that. He's making an official disclosure, and as I said, that was part of why I requested when he gave his background and said he's worked with them, with that, with, you know, the CPC in the development of this, in better than meetings. I already knew that, but he did state that, and that's part of why I stated I want to have, the idea of the committee isn't to make the bylaws. They're not making any bylaws.
No, that's our job.
They're making, right.
Right.
They're here to make recommendations to us, so to make sure the, the board hears all sides, I wanted to make sure we got a pro and a con in their ear on that committee. So, to have Mr. Donahue, I certain think he's gonna make sure that the supporters of marijuana have their voice heard, and Nekar's gonna make sure the people opposed would have their voice heard. And hopefully, the, the rest of the members are someplace down the middle.
Let me ask a question then, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
He's in business for marijuana, in a profit, working for C.C., what did you call it?
CPC.
That's Mr. Iandola Corporation, correct?
Yes, he does a lot of business with Mr. Iandola.
He's in business with him as a for-profit for the marijuana trade. Mrs. Jenkins is not in business. She is a, I don't know, consultant. I don't even know what her title would be, but that is a nonprofit organization. That's two spectrums. What about people that are just pro-marijuana, that don't have a monetary stake in it? Is there anybody with that that was appointed to that committee?
Don't know specifically. I don't think, most people didn't state pro or against marijuana. Chris Higgins did say he's not a user of marijuana, but he's there for the businessman perspective in town, how it correlates to other businesses. We have a gentleman we've...
He came to us on the planning board and was inquiring as to a business on the bottom of School Street North. He owns property down there. And he was looking at possibly opening something up down there, whether it was a testa lab or something like, along those lines. And that was a while ago, so I think he's, he was looking at being involved in the business aspect of it. But my concern was that, and I, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other, whether you are for or against it, I try to stay neutral with it. But my, my point was that I think that conflict of interest, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I, I would have thought that that would have been brought up beforehand. Not that it would have made a difference in your decision-making, because you want four, ganged, middle-of-the-road, I don't care, type of group, so you're pretty well-covered with everybody. It just seems...
I think it was clear beforehand, he's just making it official by putting it in writing.
That's all that is?
Yes. We very much understood his relationship with, with Mr. Iandola and for the marijuana stuff. That's why I said that's, we're trying to get an array, a spectrum of views into this. If they're gonna have any meaningful input, of all the hours that your board and our board has put into these bylaws and zoning bylaws, if we're gonna get anything out of it, we need the public input, and we need the whole spectrum. And that's why the first person I suggest is the last person that applied, is someone that's sort of been a moderator for different groups before, looking at both sides and trying to find a happy medium. Hopefully, someone like that can listen to it and listen to both sides and look at the bylaws and see where they might need to be moved to accommodate. And, and once, once that's done, we may accept or reject their recommendations. It's still, they have no, no monetary gain to this, it's just their ability to make the best recommendation to us. And I thought that that gave us a better, a better voice for the people.
I've written out documents like that before, with certain things being on the planning and conservation boards. I, I understand the reasoning for it. It's actually protect yourself and to protect the town, because if they're appointed onto a town committee, anytime there is a preponderance of evidence to say, well, he works for him, therefore, I think he's gonna be biased. But if you propose on that statement that that's not gonna influence me one way or the other, that's the whole purpose of those forms. I just was curious if that was the vote beforehand. And I'm not saying anybody's doing anything underhanded, I'm just, I wasn't aware, that's why I have it.
I'm, I'm sure that Tom's views represent hundreds of people. I'm sure that Nekar's views represent hundreds of people. I'm sure that our, I don't remember calling her name, from the senior population that came in.
Jane.
Jane. I'm sure she represents hundreds of people, and we've got people that are really representing large groups. And we have another, you know, one, one of the guys has had issues with one of his employees in drug rehab and issues. That's, that's a big thing for a lot of people around town. We have a lot of that. So, I think we've really got some people in there that represent large portions of our community that have polarized opinions on this for one reason or the other. So, I'm, I'm very happy with the committee we have, and I think it's our best chance to get a well-rounded input from them. And it may or may not change our decision on what we have for bylaws or zoning bylaws in either of our committees, but I think we're gonna get the best input we can from a committee without having us to be at every meeting and listen to it at our, our three publicized hearings that we take public input. They're gonna have their own meetings and their own input and talk to people, and I think we're gonna get a lot more valid data back this way. And understanding fully that he's, I expect him to be biased, that's why I wanted him in there. I expect that.
I don't wanna say too much one way or the other on this, but if people are busy, for whatever reasons, a lot of people don't get involved with certain things, they don't wanna get involved in town politics or things that affect them, it's kind of sad to see the low number of people that turn up for elections and, and town meetings like that. But the disheartening part of this whole process was the fact, not only yourselves but other boards, but working on that bylaw for so long and having very few people even show an interest in it, and then all of a sudden, they come out of the woodwork after the fact. Can't cry over spilt milk, this is the way it happened. We gotta deal, deal with the hand that was dealt us now. We got to deal, deal with the hand that was dealt us now. Hopefully, everything will come to fruition for the next town meeting, that, that committee can relate to the BOS, conservation and planning. And the next time around in June at our next town meeting, we can get something proposed on paper that a tax pay is that this is what everybody wants and see how it goes. Hopefully, it'll, it'll all work out.
I hope so. I'm still waiting to see if our moratorium gets kicked back by the state, because I expect it to. I don't think they'll let it go again. I think we're running without a moratorium without bylaws. Although by the time they kick it back, it'll be a short, short time. But we need to have some laws in effect and we can always modify them in the future if people don't like portions and meet on those. But we need something in effect.
On the up end of this, now there's a bunch more people that are interested. And that's good. You get more ideas and more input.
Well, my concern the moratorium in is the state wants to see the towns making some effort and some, some work towards this. And despite the effort we've done, what they officially see in town meetings is this is table they're not even voted on. So as far as the state's concerned, my guess would be, and this is a guess, that the towns had no effort on this. And I, I think that's bad. We need to get something on paper and get something voted in. And it can be, always be modified, you know? Any portion that is not survived by the state, the rest still is in effect. So it doesn't hurt us to put something forward.
Following along in that same line of discussion, we have another notice of conflict of interest on this from the, one of the alternates on the committee, Hillary Boudreau. And she states, I am president of the Ruggles Lane PTO. I guess that would be conduct outreach to local businesses to secure donations to benefit activities organized to support students at Ruggles Lane School. And her conflict is she helps raise thousands of dollars yearly to benefit the students. So that, she's looking at that as a conflict. I don't know if it is or it isn't, but...
No, without a financial gain, it shouldn't really be a conflict. But better safe than sorry. She's just letting it be known that...
She does that.
Well, that's the purpose of those papers. If you have any doubt, come on out.
Shout it out, yep. Yep, so...
Absolutely. And nothing against Mr. Donahue's ad working down the end. I'm not saying anything negative about him. I just wanted to make that clear.
No one took it that way, Dennis.
We have the April 1st town media, uh, election warrants.
You should have a...
Oh, there. Sign.
We already set that date? Did we vote on the date and accept it?
A bunch of these to sign.
Is it by statute that it's the first?
Pardon me?
Is it by statute that it's the first?
I don't know. I just want to make sure if we, if we need to... So the April 1st should be a statutory date.
Okay, we got it. Sam?
I was asking, I didn't know, when is the latest somebody can apply to be selected? Is there a date? Date certain?
There's a deadline, right?
Other is?
To take papers out.
Because they asked me and I said I had no idea.
It was in, yeah, it was said two different times.
Well, maybe this person didn't read the document.
Do we want to fill this date in today as well?
Yeah, I guess.
So what date may it be?
I guess we can do...
Look it up.
This is, I think it's today's date that we're signing it, right?
Fourth day of February.
Fourth, yep. So the fourth and then February, the next line down.
And all I knew was I figured, somebody would know, yeah.
In February. And do we have to fill out, sign every copy? We do, right?
We have a whole bunch of these.
I can email.
Well, let's split them up. You take a couple, I'll take a couple, and we're going to go. How many you got there?
I got three.
Three, I got, I got four, five, here, have another one.
Last date of files, February 11.
Have you put that on the website?
Yep.
Is it right, like on the front for election?
I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure it is.
I sometimes find it hard to find things.
If you find out now, I could write it down, I can email them.
Yeah. The last date of poll papers is the, this Thursday. Last date to turn them in is next Monday.
Oh, so this is the...
The 7th.
Okay, so I should tell them.
Right under latest news, right on the front page. List all the boards and committees that are available for...
Can take papers out. When do the papers have to be turned back in?
Monday. The 11th, they can turn.
So it's just October 11?
No, they were, they've been available since, since...
When was the first date?
First date that they were available was January 10.
All they can call town for is a number at the extension. I just figured... Because some, well, I guess I'm only going to hold up for me, because I'm not sophisticated enough. I mean, I'm somewhat sophisticated with, with, with that, but I'm not as sophisticated enough. And maybe people my age who might be interested are equally unsophisticated. But I don't know. I still have to put...
Okay. You all set?
Yeah, I just verified I've got them all.
Okay, we have the Rural Schools Advisory Letter. Is that in here?
Yeah, I think I forgot to print, just looked. I just noticed I forgot to print it out. This was, I believe I had forwarded this to your guys' email. Basically, it was the, there is a letter, and I'll print this off after for your, for you guys to sign. I'll leave upstairs for you, for you to come in if you agree. But basically, part of the Rural Schools Commission, they're petitioning the governor about the, the foundation budget review. And they feel that the, you know, even though they're saying that they took the recommendations of the budget, of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the budget, they're basically saying, well, no, you didn't. You helped out charter schools. You didn't, you didn't do anything to help the towns in the more actual rural areas of town, of the state in central and western Mass. So they have a, a representative letter front that they're trying to get of all the boards of selectmen from rural towns to basically petition the governor to reconsider the modeling of, of the Chapter 70 allocation.
We need that.
So as long as you guys are, are in favor of supporting the letter, I'll let you guys look, look at it again. I'll leave a signature copy and send these to us, so you can come and sign.
Yeah, I saw that, that you sent out. I saw some articles in the newspapers about it. And I think one of the things that concerned me was it really wasn't very much there for rural schools. And it was a small amount, but it was...
There was, there's a...
It's a few, few dollars per student or something. It didn't really add up to very much.
Right, the, with the way that they had kind of, the caveat wording that they put in was rural and charter schools. So a lot of that money was really going into charter schools and they were kind of putting it into that same line item, so...
And I think we've, the voters made it pretty clear a few years ago about their positions on charter schools and, and money. And apparently, some of the powers that be didn't get, quite get the message, but I think it...
It's really kind of a backhanded way of saying...
I don't think the charter schools should fall in under rural schools.
They don't care what they voted on, they're just going to do what they want.
Right, they're trying to basically put up a front to say that, yeah, we're doing something for rural schools finally. And look, look at this money in our giant budget that's going into it, but nobody's seeing on the back end where it says charter schools on it.
Right. So I think we'll just have to follow it and make sure that Senator Goldie and Representative Bertham know exactly where we're coming from on that. Particularly school transportation. Last year, we got a big increase, but that wasn't set for every year. So I think that, that's another area, and I think that affects rural schools more than anything else, is the vast amount of transportation money that gets spent. We have a resignation from the 9/11 committee, Colleen Gerton.
It was verbal, there was no letter.
Okay. There was a verbal notice. And I guess we can say thank you to Colleen for her work on that and all the other stuff that, things that she does with the rescue squad and on those issues. So we thank her for her service on that. And we have a request for appointment to the 9/11 committee from...
Paul Murphy.
Paul Murphy, Sheldon Road. He's a veteran post two. He retired from the Quavon Regional School District. He's been a resident of Barry for 27 years. And he'd like to serve on the 9/11 memorial committee. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul F. Murphy to the 9/11 memorial committee.
Okay, and I will second that. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. And we have a request here to use town property. And to use the town hall from the Woods Memorial Library for a family science program called Cosmic Kelly. And there will be no food served, estimate 125 attendees. And that came from Stephanie Young, the librarian. What are the wishes of the board? She wants it on April the 17th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have any conflict with that time? We do not.
So this is use of the town building by another town entity. I'd make a motion, we approve the request to use the town property and waive the fee.
Okay, second. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we did have a second request to use town property come in today. It should be in the back here, package for Quavon Youth Football. They just want to use it for a board meeting.
I think I did see that.
Came in today, but they were looking for next week, so I just move it up to today's
Yeah, I found that.
So they just...
It should be in the back.
They just want to be in here, not in the Henry Woods. Not in the...
They're looking for, for town hall, not Woods.
Okay, so up here, okay. We don't have...
If I had it here, I would read it.
Do we have a room they can use for that on that day? Thirty, thirty people?
Also.
Okay.
This is from the Quavon Youth Football and Cheering Group. And Mary Berg, Markowski cheerperson. They wish to use the town hall on February 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a board meeting and a kickoff meeting. Estimate 30 people to attend. There will be no food served.
Make a motion to approve the request to use the town hall for Quavon Youth Football and Cheer on February 12th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, I will second that. And in favor?
Aye.
We have a wage authorization here from Fire Chief Bob Rogowski, Robert Rogowski. For EMT firefighter Kyle Gale?
Coley.
Coley, okay. And he's working 40 hours per week, $16.77 proposed hourly salary effective January 28th this year, $1,832, 40 hours per week. What is the pleasure of the board?
This is stuff that you know about, we're going through with them, or?
Yeah, so, because he just got his paramedics, so he's...
They make any of the stuff?
They're going to move him up a step prior to the, it's basically...
That was both of them?
Always designated as...
They both got that, or?
No, Kyle was the only one that got, got his paramedic's license. But he's not a fully clear to do on his own. Right, so this puts, puts him into an intermediate position until the end of the fiscal year when he'll, when he'll be clear. And at that point, he'll move up to, to the medic, the medic position, or medic firefighter as it was identified in the... Jason received his EMT license basic, so that's why he's going to this stuff.
Is it the full license?
Yeah.
Excellent. I make a motion to approve both wage grade increases.
Okay, now, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and we have one for, did you do both or get one?
Yeah, both, it said both, yeah.
Okay. And let's see. We have a request from Ed Yarwood. And I'll read it. And may I request permission to use the selectmen's meeting rooms at the Henry Woods Building for meetings of a yet-to-be-formed trails committee, a non-governmental citizens group with a mission to develop trails in Barry, encourage public use of all outdoor facilities. This group would be self-selected interested citizens and would be invited by public announcement to join. If a trails committee were to be recommended by the new open space plan, the citizen group might well be the source of talent. I expect to kickoff, to kickoff this effort, hoping that the group will outlive me. I assume that's kind of a rhetorical sort of comment. We would expect to use the selectmen's meeting room on Wednesday evenings, the day when there were no scheduled town board or committee meetings. We realize that in case conflict, town business would take precedence, use of this space would be pre-arranged with your administrative assistant. Thank you for your consideration. It's signed by Ed Yarwood. Ed, did you have anything?
No, I just, I just want, I came in case you had concerns about a non-governmental group. Obviously, I'm trying to avoid all of the public meeting posting and all of that, because we don't think that that's necessary to just get an interested group doing something out there in the woods.
Okay, so it'll be open to the public? It will be open to the public?
Yes.
Is this going to be a regular scheduled meeting, or do you have any idea how often you're going to meet on Wednesdays? It will be...
I, I try for monthly.
Monthly meetings? I know when we get into budgets meetings, budget season, don't we get into Wednesdays?
Thursdays.
Thursdays?
Thursdays.
All right, good. Well, I'd make a motion, we approve the use of the board meeting room on Wednesdays for Mr. Yagil and his soon-to-be group.
I will second that. Any other discussion? Do you have anything else you wish to add?
I think I've come before the, so many times promising things, it's about time I got...
Well, this is still another promise, but we'll see. I said still another promise, though, we don't have the group yet. You gonna vote?
Yes, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's all we're covering for these things, right? We don't have Hardwick?
On their way.
Do we have an executive session?
No.
I don't know if you want to wait for Matt.
He asked me, wait for all of them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I believe, I'm looking at an email correspondence.
And this.
I thought he wanted to wait for all of them. I was trying to look at the correspondence being in.
I'm fine with that, I just knew we were holding on to the fire chief's one.
What was the other one?
Mine.
What's that?
Mine.
Yes. I think we give them the respect of waiting.
All right.
And this notice here is just for our information?
So we had originally had, been discussing the, we were gonna have the discussion with Hardwick, can you bring Trent Peterson tonight, but due to the untimely passing of Steve Boudreaux, Peterson kind of wasn't really in a position to be meeting tonight, so we have to delay.
Okay, so we're just waiting on Hardwick at this point?
Right, and we're just gonna discuss.
Did you have anything else you wanted to bring up at this time?
Simon's report.
What?
And town administrator report, can do those.
Yeah.
She's been very busy with budget right now, crunching numbers together and making sure everything fits and trying to get everything going with the capital. It's really, a lot of my time and energy's been devoted the last few weeks, so. I did have a few things I was putting together for a report that was gonna go out today, and I can't think of one off the top of my head. OSHA regulations, that was one. So February first, the new OSHA regulations have officially come into play for public sector employees, so I've also been working on putting together a risk management plan for, for the town as required under that statute, so it's moving along. Not quite there yet, but just at least getting everything on paper, that's the first key point. And then getting that information out there once it is all squared away is gonna be the next step, so. Two big things we've been really working on a lot, so.
Okay, and the finance committee, players meeting this Thursday. Okay, I will try to be there. Okay. Then I guess we can declare a quick recess until our powder packs from Hardwick show up, if you, unless you have anything else you wish to bring up at this point?
I don't, actually.
Okay, we'll take a quick break until they show up. I assume they'll be here soon.
I'm on the waning end of my.
What?
I'm on the waning end of my cold, so I'm happy you made it in tonight. And that's apparently in the middle of his, so my last weekend have not been productive.
And what action do we need?
Well, you know, if you guys are on board with this type, this, uh, this formula, the, the way that this is proposed, we can really kind of formalize this into, into an amendment to the agreement. And then if you want the next, we're supposed to meet to discuss the building agreement hopefully on the fourth, if that one, if that date works for you guys and we can come back to the table, make sure the wording's correct and vote on it then. But I think the main thing is, you know, for, if we wanna make sure we wanna move into this direction, you know, boards are on board with moving in that direction.
And given that he's already said this is increasing the budget, as is, I'm happy with that. So I just, I'd rather see the budget bump up with that contribution, not just our costs come down. And that's what it's done, so I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think the only issue is if we sign this before town meeting, what, um...
It's gonna go in our next year's budget, it's not this year.
Right, I agree, but if it doesn't pass the town meeting, what happens in that instance?
They don't typically get, they don't go line by line item by line item to cut this.
Agreed, but I'm just...
If it fails, we can come back to the table.
We'll just come back.
Yeah, we'll be back.
We have to, if it fails. Same thing with the school budget.
I kind of think of every possible scenario, so I'm just putting it out there.
Right, well, it's the same thing if the school budget fails. You know, wholeheartedly, they're gonna have to come back and then if it doesn't work, then we'll go to an arbitrary, but the same thing...
And it goes to the state.
Yeah, but they gotta try to work it out first.
This is Clara Adamis, she's chairman of, chairperson of our finance committee.
The other question I'm thinking about is on the transportation, the buses and stuff. Does Havoc have their own?
Yes, we have our own.
Okay, I wasn't sure how that was handled, if that was included in this or not.
We're actually looking to move from having two different services to having one common service and it would have to be Harwick's service that we're looking to adopt.
Can I just ask a question kind of off the related but not related? Are you guys looking at bringing, possibly allowing other towns to use your, because it is such a great center? And just kind of reiterating what you heard from some of our other members, Gloria, you know, I kinda wish I was a little older so I could take advantage of it, but she raves about it and so the fact that you have such a nice center where other municipalities don't, have you guys looked at the possibility of having other towns participate with you?
Definitely open to it.
I don't think we've officially looked into it, but I think that, why don't you come on up, Ily, come on. Have a chair right here with me, I'll move over. Come on over.
I have been approached by...
Have my chair, come on.
No, come right up.
Come sit, get comfortable.
But they're still in the works, they're still, they need to talk to town administrators.
The country chairs up here.
And they're selecting on that. One was New Braintree had approached and then I did get some calls from Peterson as well. So they're, because they don't have a center, they don't even have anything up there. But they did give me a call and were asking some questions, so that may be another possibility.
What's our capacity for, for more members to have more people coming in?
The building capacity is a hundred and fifty-four, I think it is.
Okay, and so when we see a hundred and sixty-six, that's not typically all there at once.
Right, right.
And that, well, you see what I'm saying, the concern is that we get overdoing, it's my only worry.
No, no.
Won't be a problem.
Because it's spread out over the week, every day's different, so it's not always the same.
So that's a weekly count?
That would be a monthly count.
Okay, so you've got plenty of room.
That's what I'm just, see, I don't know, I'm embarrassed to say I haven't, I haven't gone down there for any meal times to see what's going on. I work typically during the daytime, so I'd love to go down and check it out and see what goes on, but I just haven't.
Anytime.
Got, I might, I might now over the winter, I still have some time this winter.
Where there, you're all invited.
But so far, this is probably working.
We're actually, Wednesday, is it Wednesday? No, the fourteenth, we're having a pasta bar, so you're more than welcome to come down.
Let me know when you do that line dancing again, I guess.
Okay, 'cause we're open to it, it's just up to the other towns.
It's usually a good approach.
We're certainly open to it.
I'm just, I'm thinking about it from the next...
I can't have gluten, so.
You're gonna have to pay for the building, like paying for the building, for heating, all of that stuff. And if you have a broader population, offset the cost, that's gonna, you know, free up some of, maybe potentially some of Barry's funds or whatever, to offer more programs there.
Yeah, so we would bring them in, you know, that the fact that we're setting this baseline of percentage usage, you kind of set the baseline for any other towns coming in to say, you know, we'll, we'll start you off at, you know, a certain, what we think would be your contribution for the first year and then after that, this would basically be at the end of the calendar year, we'd look at this and enact it into the next year's fiscal year budget, so.
So do you envision that once we sign this updated agreement, that this would be an annual review we would continue to do?
I would think so.
Yeah, that's still, that's still...
I believe it's in the agreement.
Okay.
In regards to the, the closeout at, at the end and money's left over, and so there were two options on how to deal with that, whether it be re... to nineteen plus the block grant.
Plus the seven, sorry.
Yeah.
So twenty-six.
So we're going to be about.
But we have a lot more people.
At session meeting, we had increased the amount, the amount of.
Assessment.
Just so that we're comparing numbers and we're looking at it. So we're really going from, say, fifteen to about twenty-six.
With the block grant, with the block grant, yes. Yes, yes.
And it wasn't quite at a full participation level this year, as far percentage wise. It was still under this year. The first year was not even considered. But that's why I proposed it, just because trying to be reasonable for the Berry residents, say we don't incur the expense. But now I'm kind of in the opinion of if we've incurred the expense, maybe we get some money back off it. But I'd like to see us be able to put more toward the senior center and allow more activities. And that may draw more of them, which will increase money.
So in FY eighteen, our filed approved budget was sixty-five seven. The proposed FY twenty budget is eighty thousand one fifty-one at this point. So we are looking, you know, we are moving.
Excellent. Excellent.
So you're looking internal for your own finances, you're looking about a fifteen thousand dollar increase, year to year, fourteen and some change?
Well, nineteen's budget was seventy-seven to eleven. So we did do an increase of recognition of the seventy, of the seventy-five that we got in. But that would move, it's another three thousand. Obviously, if we go off of this assessment, any increases that we have would impact both parties. So we wouldn't want it to just do it in a vacuum and say, hey, we decided to throw another fifteen thousand dollars into the, into the senior center budget and expect you guys to just take on the burden.
No, the intent, my proposal intent isn't to try to raise their contribution as well. It's just saying that if it allows another program down there or something, you know, something to help with the, with the busing or whatever other, I mean, what do you think of her monthly newsletters?
Awesome.
Unbelievably informative. There's a lot going on. It's well thought out. I'm very impressed with what she does down there. Very impressed. And I'd like to encourage that. And she was last Sunday getting them some tablets and computers and trying to get people to learn, which is good. And I like it.
Okay. Andrew, what action do we need?
Well, you know, if you guys are on board with this type, this, this formula, the way that this is proposed, we could really kind of formalize this into, into amendment to the agreement. And then if you want the next, we're supposed to need to discuss the building agreement hopefully on the fourth, if that one, if that date works for you guys and we can come back to the table, make sure the wording's correct and vote on it then. But I think the main thing is, you know, for, if we want to, make sure we want to move into this direction, you know, former boards are on board with moving in that direction.
And given that he's already said this is increasing the budget, as is, I'm happy with that. So I just, I'd rather see the budget bump up with that contribution, not just our costs come down. And that's what it's done. So I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think the only issue is if we sign this before town meeting, what?
It's going to go in our next year's budget. It's not this year.
Right. I agree. But if it doesn't pass the town meeting, what happens in that instance?
They don't typically get, they don't go line by line item by line item to cut this.
Agreed. But I'm just.
If it fails, we can come back to the table.
Yeah, we'll be back. We have to if it fails. Same thing with the school budget.
I always think of every possible case scenario.
Right. That's right. Well, it's the same thing if the school budget fails. Yeah, wholeheartedly, they're going to have to come back. And then if it doesn't work, then we'll go to an arbitrator. But the same thing.
And it goes to the state.
Yeah. But they got to try to work it out first.
This is Claire Adamis, chairman of, peer person of our finance committee.
The other question I'm thinking about is on the transportation, the buses and stuff. Does Hartwick have their own?
Yes. We have our own.
Okay. I wasn't sure how that was handled. If that wasn't included in this or no.
We're actually looking to move from having two different services to having one common service and it would be Hartwick service that we're looking to adopt.
Can I just ask a question kind of off the related but not related? Are you guys looking at bringing, possibly allowing other towns to use here? Because it is such a great center and just kind of reiterating what you heard from some of our other members, Gloria, you know, I kind of wish I was a little older so I could take advantage of it. But she raves about it. And so the fact that you have such a nice center where other municipalities don't, have you guys looked at the possibility of having other towns participate with you?
Definitely open to it.
I don't think we've officially looked into it. But I think that, why don't you come on up, Eileen? Come on. Have a chair right here with me. I'll move over. Come on over.
I have been approached by.
Have my chair. Come on.
No, come right up.
Come sit. Get comfortable.
But they're still in the works. They're still, they need to talk to town.
They have comfy chairs up here.
And they're selecting on that. One was New Braintree had approached. And then I did get some calls from Petersham as well. So they're, because they don't have a center, they don't even have anything up there. But they did give me a call and were asking some questions. So that may be another possibility.
What's our capacity for, for more members down there, more people coming?
The building capacity is a hundred and fifty-four, I think it is.
Okay. And so when we see a hundred and sixty-six, that's not typically all there at once.
Right. Right.
And that, well, you see what I'm saying? The concern is that we get overdoing. It's my only worry.
No. No. Because it's spread out over the week. Every day's different. So it's not always the same.
So that's a weekly, that's a weekly count?
That would be a monthly count.
Okay. So you've got plenty of room.
That's what I'm just, see, I don't know. I'm embarrassed to say I haven't, I haven't gone down there for any meal times to see what's going on. I work typically during the daytime. So I'd love to go down and check it out and see what goes on. I just haven't.
Anytime.
Got, I might, I might now over the winter. I still have some time this winter.
Where there, you're all invited.
But so far it is.
We're actually, Wednesday, is it Wednesday? No, the fourteenth, we're having a pasta bar. So you're more than welcome to come down.
Let me know when you do that line dancing again. I missed that.
Okay. I guess we're open to it. It's just up to the other towns.
It's usually good of it.
We're certainly, we're certainly open.
I'm just, I'm thinking about it.
I can't have gluten, so. But I got to stop it. I just got to get down there. I'm trying.
Paying for the building, for the heat, all of that stuff. And if you have a broader population, offset the cost, that's going to, you know, free up some of, maybe potentially some of Berry's funds or whatever to offer more programs there.
Yeah. Yeah. So we would bring them in, you know, that the fact that we're setting this baseline of percentage usage kind of sets the baseline for any other towns coming in to say, you know, we'll, we'll start you off at, you know, a certain, what we think would be your contribution for the first year. And then after that, this would basically be at the end of the calendar year. We'd look at this and enact it into the next year's fiscal year budget. So.
So do you envision that once we sign this updated agreement that this would be an annual review we would continue to do and kind of?
I would think so.
Yeah, that's still, that's still.
I believe it's in the agreement. Yes.
Okay.
In regards to the closeout at the end and money's left over. And so there were two options on how to deal with that, whether it be reimbursement or whether it be a reduced assessment the following fiscal year, right? So should we be talking about that or include language?
Yeah, well, let's, language in that because we were discussing that on the other agreements. But I do think that that is important, that for any, any excess funds to be used to reduce the assessment report.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wished?
Just to thank you.
Well, thank you.
It's been a great, it's been a great experience, to be honest with you. Because we were hated when we first put this in place.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, because you were closing down what you had.
Yes. And she comes in now and actually admits, I knew, I didn't think it would work. I didn't. And she's just.
It's those mean people in Berry. You got to stay away from them.
Yeah.
It's the selection of awful to deal with.
She's very happy.
Yeah.
Part of it is socializing though. You know, you're socializing with just your community, but then you're also reaching out and having exposure to different programs that we couldn't offer or, you know. So I think it's a huge benefit for our population.
Everybody involved.
And the resources that have been made available.
But just social contacts, just, just, just constant social contacts.
Expanding their social network. And that's, that's key.
And learning how to get on Facebook and do it. Right?
Well, we certainly have a very good director and she's been working very hard to make sure it goes.
We do your good things about that as well.
Good. Good. Thank you.
We thank you. We thank you for that.
I think we all appreciate what you do.
We certainly do.
Thank you. You can like me on Facebook. Berry COA.
Okay. So I guess we don't need any votes tonight. It just.
Yeah, we'll get the wording in place because.
Start the wording and get that done.
We can sign a new agreement next time.
Okay. Very good. Excellent. Well, we thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you very much.
So I guess we all start talking to Petersham next.
New Braintree.
New Braintree too? Okay.
Okay.
There was a more of a push.
Well, but the, well, the point is that they're asking if we're open to more towns. And if we are, then we'd say, yeah, if we see people from other towns, why not talk to them and encourage them to open a dialogue?
And they can contact us for reference.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're part of it. They can contact you directly. Maybe, and they can stop it anyway. Any individual can stop in and check out the senior center whenever they want. Right? They don't have to be from the town to go have a meal there. So have a good night. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay. Do we have any other great business to come before this ponderous board tonight?
Hearing. No, but let's linger on that for a second and take a second to thank you, Charlie, because you're the one that started that and got that going. You did a good job with that. And people should know that. That was Charlie's meeting with them to start that. They wanted to meet with him privately, one-on-one, because this was so touching with their talent and stuff. And it's going very well. I think they did a good job working it out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Very happy for us to have you.
And on that note, I'll look for the appropriate motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, and we can just, in favor or go. Aye.